All right, good evening, everybody. I'll call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan, if you would read our community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? All right. Seeing none, we'll move along to the recognition of Police Sergeant Joseph Ritz for 30 years of service to the town of Carver. Chief?
Thank you. Give us a few minutes for something very pleasurable. And I'll take a few minutes to speak tonight in honor and recognize the member of Carver Police Department. After 30 years of service to the town of Carver, Sergeant Joseph Ritz has retired. Sergeant Ritz began his career with the Carver Police Department in 1993 as a special police officer under Chief Scoog's watch. During that time period, he also worked for the town of Plymouth as assistant harbor master and then as harbor master. In February of 2005, he was hired as a full-time police officer and attended the police academy in Boylston. While working patrol, he also took on several other roles within the department, including becoming the stop-stick instructor in 2007, becoming the medical control officer in 2009, and using his skills from the harbor master days to train our personnel on the use of the police boat in Sampson's Pond. In October of 2010, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. In this role, he supervised many of our officers on various shifts. Most recently, he's been assigned as a shift manager to the 4 to 12 shift. He is also the senior sergeant until his retirement, which we'll move on to Sergeant Rizzuto after this. In reviewing his personnel folder, one finds many compliments from citizens regarding his empathy, compassion, and good work over the years. However, one particular incident comes to mind. In July of 2020, Sergeant Ritz and fellow officers responded to a call for service to assist a neighboring agency in taking a person into custody. When they arrived, it quickly became evident that the party was suffering from mental health issues. Subject arms itself with a bow and arrow and threatened to harm anyone who came in to get him. Sergeant Ritz and the other officers were able to evacuate the other family members from the home and set up a perimeter to ensure the safety of others. He then spent nearly two hours talking with that subject, de-escalating the situation, and getting the subject to surrender peacefully. His other role as union vice president, Sergeant Ritz has assisted many of the community service events that the union department carries out every year, including Carver Night Out and the Christmas toy drive. As his full-time career winds down, he will, with the board's approval, continue to assist the community as a special police officer. At this time, I would like to present Sergeant Joseph Ritz with a plaque in appreciation for all his years of service. If I could take one? Sergeant Joseph Ritz, recognition and appreciation of 30 years of outstanding service to the Carver Police Department and the citizens of the town of Carver. This department and our community are better places to live and work thanks to your many years of dedicated service. On your final tour, duty, December 16th, 2023. Congratulations.
Do you need a picture of the family?
Of course they would.
Thanks for your appearance. I can't see you. Thank you.
Let's see if it's yours. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Why don't you? Pardon me? Why don't you go ahead and?
Oh, I'm good. I just want to say thank you. I didn't plan on saying anything.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you had something you wanted to say.
No, no, thank you. All good. So the last thing I would ask the honorable void to do is to approve a motion to appoint Sergeant Ritz as a special police officer of the town of Carver so that he can continue to serve the citizens and help work police details as we need.
I'd like to make that motion.
Well, well.
Oh, it's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda.
So I'll have to do it next time.
So I think we'll have to wait till the next meeting to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda, so I don't think we can do that this evening. So we'll schedule that for a January 2nd meeting?
Sure. Okay.
Okay? Sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Don't go far because the next item on our agenda is an appointment of a new police officer, Mark Paschnik. Chief?
I'm asking you to come up with me.
Officer Paschnik, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Okay, good evening again, and thank you for another important message. We're looking tonight to appoint a new police officer. We solicited and received three potential candidates for lateral transfer into the department. Our hiring policy creates a preliminary screening panel made up of our deputy chief, sergeants, and officers. This panel conducts a screening of the applicants and recommends a group of candidates to move forward in the process. The panel moves all three persons forward and background checks were performed. After interviews with Mr. Townsend, Mr. Fennessy, Mrs. Weston, Deputy Chief Sarmanto, and myself, we have narrowed the search down to one officer who I'm presenting to you tonight for appointment as a full-time Carver police officer. I'm proud to present you Officer Mark Paschnik. Officer Paschnik is currently a police officer of the town of Chatham. He has worked in Chatham for the past eight years. During that time, he has received training in many subjects, including being a field training officer. Prior to working in Chatham, he worked for the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department for seven years. During his tenure there, he worked as part of a community policing team of officers who responded to specific issues within the district. He received several accommodations and awards, including making arrests of violent criminals and removing illegal firearms from the streets. He is a resident of Carver where he resides with his wife and two stepdaughters, and he's very excited at the possibility of working in the town that he resides. After interviewing him, reviewing his background check, and knowing our preliminary screening panel moved him forward, I am very confident that Officer Paschnik will make an excellent addition to our team at CPD. I would like to request the Honorable Select Board to approve a motion to appoint Officer Mark Paschnik as a full-time police officer for the Carver Police Department, contingent upon completing the requisite medical exam, which we just haven't had the chance to get done yet, but we will this week.
All right. Thank you. There are questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations, Officer Paschnik. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is an application for a Class III license for Ferrera's Used Cars, 3032 West Street.
Good idea.
Yeah, sure.
How are you gentlemen tonight?
Good. You could just introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Vernon Ferrera.
And your address, Mr. Ferrari?
Excuse me?
Your address?
30, no, 27 North Main Street.
Thank you. Tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
Well, I have a Class II dealer's license, and I'm looking to upgrade it to a Class III license because I buy and sell cars. And sometimes at the auctions, I'll buy a car, and there'll be another car right beside it I'll buy for parts. And I buy that car for parts, and then once I get the parts off it, I can't sell the parts. So I'm, you know, basically looking to upgrade the license so I can buy these cars instead of just selling them as, you know, when I'm done with them, making no money off them. I can make more money off them if I have a Class III license, which it allows me to sell the parts off the car.
Okay. Are the cars all going to be kept at the West Street location?
Oh, yeah, it's all going to be the same. Nothing's going to get any bigger. It's just, you know, just for me to, you know, upgrade my business a little bit so I can move it to the parts department. I mean, my father's done it. My family's done it for generations. You know, we pay out taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Anyone?
I guess, is it Scott? Sorry. Is there any? It looks like a standard practice, selling. It looks like a standard practice, you know, buying parts or taking cars and selling the parts, but is there some kind of application process that has already been done?
He's completed the application. I have it here. Pack it.
Yeah, the Class II application is the one where you have to have the public hearing. Class III is just this paper application and coming before the board.
Right here, Mr..
Oh, sorry.
If you look in your packet, it's a little raised down. But you can let go of it a little here if you like.
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
So today you do not store any parts for the vehicles? You have to?
Well, like, I'll buy the car, and when I'm done with the car and I take the parts off the car, I usually end up selling the car for salvage.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because I don't have the license to sell the parts. I have the license to sell the car.
Okay.
And what I would like to do is just upgrade my license so I can, you know, once I buy this car, I can, you know, take care, you know, get rid of it in, you know, the proper ways and dismantle it and sell the parts.
Okay. And you'll be storing the parts at the existing property?
Same location as it's always been, 3032 West Street.
And, but now it's going to be a change in scope because now, instead of having vehicles, you're just going to have to, you know, taking the parts off, but you're going to be having to put them someplace.
I have a commercial license for a commercial building, and I have plenty of land.
Okay. And how many parts roughly are we talking that you'd be storing on the property?
Well, you know, it depends on the cars, you know what I mean? I mean, you know, as I sell the cars and the ones I buy, you know, for the parts, I, you know, I eliminate.
Okay.
When they get to a certain, mainly what I'm most likely probably going to end up doing is, you know, I'll strip the car. I'll strip the car for the catalytic converters, the aluminum rims, the wires, and then I'll crush the car and send it out, you know, whatever parts, you know, it won't sit there long.
Okay.
But I mean, I'm not looking for one car license. I'm looking, you know, for multi, you know.
Yeah. I was just trying to understand if it was hundreds of cars we're talking a year or like?
Well, it depends on how the market is, you know. It could be good one year, and I might do 100, 150 cars.
Okay.
You know what I mean? But more than likely, the parts are, I'm going to sell the parts, but I mean, the cars ain't going to sit around because catalytic converters, aluminum rims, the wires, and the crushed cars worth a lot of money. The market fluctuates. It goes up and it goes down. So, you know, I might sit on, you know, 20 cars for, you know, a month or two, and then the market will go through the roof, and I'll have no choice but to get rid of them. And, you know, we'll do the same thing as the salvage item we have now. You know, we'll crush them, we'll do it the proper way, get rid of the fluids, and send them out the door. You know, it's all in the market. Like, one day the market, you might get $90 for crushed, you know, crushed cars. And then it might drop down to $45, and all of a sudden I'll get an order, and it'll go up to 200, 250. And if I got, you know, 30, 40, 50 cars there, I send a load out, and I start over again. Then I go to the auction, and I proceed to buy more cars.
Anything else? Is there a motion on this?
A move that we approve the Class III license for Ferrera's used cars.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for coming in this evening, Mr. Ferrari.
You guys have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. You as well. All right. Next, we have our town administrator update. Our town administrator was unable to be with us this evening, but we have our assistant town administrator, Ms. Weston.
I'm going to give you an update on Ward Street.
Okay. Thank you.
So the general contractor has mobilized their equipment on the job site. That was on Monday, the 11th, and construction repairs began that morning. The field, the company, the engineering company is called Field Engineering Corp., and Carver Operations and Maintenance Representatives have been on-site daily with the general contractor for resolution decisions and oversight of the work. The repairs are currently on schedule for completion and road opening in approximately three weeks. Town representatives, including the select board chair, select board members Jim Hoffman, town administrator Bob Fennessy, fire chief Craig Weston, police chief Mark Dufulie, EMS chief Mike Ryan, and O&amp;M director Dave Seidnotoff, attended a meeting with the South Meadow Village residents at their clubhouse Thursday afternoon at 4:30 to provide the project update and answer any questions regarding the project.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Yep.
Mr. Ryan?
Did we have a date roughly on, you said three weeks, but what was that from?
It's approximate, obviously, weather pending. Obviously, we had a storm yesterday. No work happened on it yesterday, and they had to go back out and assess things today.
Okay. So we're saying three weeks from today?
Approximately.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is a town administrator screening committee interviews. We have a number of applicants to be interviewed. Applying for the at-large members are Gail DiTomaso, Ellen Blanchard, Roger Shores, Roger Shores Jr., Ellen Sordillo was originally an applicant, but she has withdrawn her application, Kevin Tracy, Steve Ward, and Mary Ross. And then we have a couple of applicants for the business community member, Art Gordon and Kevin Tracy. So everyone knows, this membership of the screening committee was established by an act of town meeting in 2022. The screening committee shall consist of nine members. The composition of the committee will be one member chosen by each respective board, the finance committee, school committee, and the planning board, two public safety representatives who are not appointed by the select board. The select board will appoint three members at large and one member of the business community who must be a Carver resident and a business stakeholder. So some members have been appointed already. The school committee appointed Stephanie Clowerty as their representative. The finance committee appointed Pat Mahar as their representative, and the planning board appointed John Gasky as their representative. And then the public safety chiefs, Mark Dufulie, Chief Dufulie, and Chief Weston are their public safety representatives. So tonight we'll be appointing three at-large members and a member of the business community. So we'll give everybody, you have everyone's applications in your packet. I want to give everyone a quick chance to address the committee if you'd like. Let's say, let's say three minutes or so. One member did ask, I think would plan on taking everybody in alphabetical order, but Gail DiTomaso did reach out to us and let her know she had a conflict. So, Gail, if you'd like to come up and go first. If you could just quickly give us your name and address for the record.
Gail DiTomaso, 2 Meadowbrook Way, Apartment C, in Carver.
All right, thank you.
I lived in Carver for about a year now. My experience with town government was with the town of Kingston with their planning board, not in an official capacity, but in a citizen's participation capacity for issues that I was concerned with. I would like to represent my own population of seniors in the interviewing process with a new town administrator. I have spent some time with Bob Fennessy, talking to him about his vision for what a town administrator for Carver, what Carver needs, what to look for in a future town administrator. Personally, I have a varied background. I've been retired 10 years, but I have a master's in counseling and education. I've been involved in education, administration at the graduate level at Northeastern University, veterinary medicine. I mean, I've been around. I've done a lot of different things. And I'd like, I plan to die in this community. I don't plan on leaving. So I do want to be involved.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions?
Yes, I'll probably ask all the members the same, but have you served on any kind of a screening committee in the past?
No.
Okay. And what are some of the goals that you're looking for? You mentioned you had some vision for the town and goals that you're looking for.
Well, in terms of senior citizens, I am aware, I mean, I very firmly believe in conservation and environmental protections. I am aware that there needs to be a revenue to pay for these things, you know, increased involvement of the town and senior citizens and senior citizens with the town.
Yes, so, yeah, please. So what are you, what were you looking for in the qualities of a town administrator that would support those goals?
First of all, the most experience we could get in previous positions in previous towns, their track record there. And what they feel, I'd like to find somebody who shares the same interests as I do. Obviously, I know Bob Fennessy talked first and foremost about a community that you need to feel safe in and protected, and I agree with him there, and I think Carver's done a very nice job with that.
Okay.
I feel a lot safer here than where I came from.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Can I have a question?
Sure.
I need to hang around, though, don't I? You're going to pick the people tonight?
Well, you're going to pick the people tonight, but you don't necessarily have to be here. We'll let the folk, we'll let everybody know whether we're selected or not, so.
So I don't have to stay?
You don't, you don't have to stay. You can if you like, but if I could just ask you one question before you leave, and I'll likely ask everyone the same question as well. This committee will likely be meeting frequently, especially toward the end of the committee's assignment when they get close to choosing someone. So I just want to make sure everybody has that availability, that their schedules.
I would make this a priority.
All right.
I just had a very, a very difficult book reading, and I do not want to miss my book club tonight.
Okay.
I've never read Colton Whitehead before, before he was hard, and I don't want to miss credit.
Okay. All right, have a good night. Thank you. All right, before we move on in alphabetical order, is there anyone else here that has a time conflict where they need to? Okay. Hearing none. Ellen Blanchard is our next applicant. Welcome.
Thank you.
And again, we'll say three minutes or so just to address the board and take any questions the board may have.
Okay. My name is Ellen Blanchard. I live at 238 Main Street. I have been a resident of Carver for over 30 years, and this is now my hometown. It has been, and I plan, this is my forever home. So I have been a municipal employee for about 40 years and in different capacities and different towns. I am frequently consulted by other town administrators when they want to get an idea or an impression of what a former employee might have been, and that's not necessarily in the town of Carver, but just in general. And that's been something I've done for most of my municipal career. I think for the next town administrator, we need somebody who is not just educated, not just experienced, but a combination of that with a lot of common sense. I think that's very important, and I think that, I think I'm a pretty good judge of character, and I think that's an important aspect of the job as well, because they need to be open to the public, but they also need to know when not to be, when there are things that are under consideration that should not be made public. And somebody who's going to work well with the board of assessors and all of the other boards. In particular, obviously, the board of assessors, because without the assessors, it would be very hard to get a tax bill out. So that's kind of a little priority for me. But if, I just would like, it's part of me. I have plenty of time because I am retired, even though I do consulting on, now. But if there's any questions, anyone would like to ask, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
So I was going to ask.
Is that on?
Is it not working?
Oh, there it is.
Okay. I was going to ask Ms. Tomassio the same question, but she had to leave us. What are you looking for in a town administrator in his or her relations with employees, interactions?
I think it's very important for the town administrator to be not just a friend, because I think that's going too far, but I think accommodating in that they will listen, because it's very important for employees to feel that their, their sense of self-worth is important to the, to the entire organization, and I think that's crucial. And if they know that they can go to the town administrator with any concerns without any repercussions, I think that's a very healthy thing to have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
What kind of experience do you think is important for the town of Carver now as where we are?
Well, we certainly had some interesting town administrators over the, since 1995 or '06. So it's interesting to see what else is out there. We all know what each of those people had as their good points and some not-so-good points, and we need to be looking for somebody who is concerned first and foremost with what is needed for the town and working well with the board of selectmen, and being generally open to the public and letting them know, you know, that he or she is not going to hide in the office, that they will be made, they will make themselves available to the public. they will make themselves available to the public.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Obviously, on, you've seen a lot, you've been, you've got a lot of experience there, but if you had to pick your top three goals for the next town administrator, what do you think they might be? Just briefly, you don't have to go into great detail.
Well, I think it's really important for the town administrator to function well for the Board of Selectmen, all of them, so that everyone is, is being heard. Being heard is huge, and I think that's, and being able to articulate that, which I might not have done tonight, but that person needs to be able to articulate their thoughts and reasonings behind all of what they're trying to impart. And I think the financial aspect of running a town is extremely important. And understanding, and so many people don't even understand what the levy is. You know, and that's something that we work with in the Assessor's Office all the time. And so I think it's really, really important for people to understand, or for the person who comes in, to understand what the good things are that can be done with budgets and what, and how it should be done. So those would be my top three.
Anything, anything else? Mr. Hoffman?
If you could pick one thing, what do you think you bring to the, would bring to the screening committee?
I have had a lot of experience with a lot of different town administrators and executive secretaries and so on. I've seen a lot of good. I've seen a lot of not-so-good. But I think I can tell when somebody is being honest with me, because that's key for me. If, if they aren't being honest, I can tell pretty much right away that there's something else going on. And I think honesty is always the best policy. So if they can be honest with us, I think that's extremely important. Integrity, it's huge.
Thank you. Okay, and as I asked the previous applicant, I do anticipate a lot of meetings going on here. You have the availabilities, no conflicts that you see, nothing coming up? These things prevent you from attending?
Just my personal life, but I am available almost all the time.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. Next this evening is Roger Shores. Roger Shores, not Roger Shores Jr. Welcome, thanks for coming in tonight.
No problem. My name is Roger Shores. I'll give you a little personal history. I grew up in Braintree, Massachusetts, on a cow farm, actually a dairy farm. I went to University of Massachusetts at Annhurst. After graduating from that, I went and worked for, as a scientist for a contractor down in Vietnam. From there, I went on to be an educator in chemistry, physics, and mathematics. And after that, after my first 10 or so years, I started to have duplicate, not duplicate, but I had two occupations. So I had 25 years of teaching. I had 20 years of cranberry bog growing. And I had 22 years as a forester in harvesting timber. So that's a little of my background. Well, I should say that I've lived in Carver for 50 years. And you should have in front of you my bullet points for my application. Okay. I think that town administrator is the most important position. I'm sorry, but I think it's the most important position of the town. What, what I want to see in a town administrator is no politics. And in the screening committee, no politics. I've seen that ruin the town over the years. I can digress for a moment. I remember being at a select was beating when we had them downstairs and police had to be called. It's been pretty rough over the years. So I think we have to be very careful in who we choose. I want a committee that can agree to disagree. I think debate is critical when looking at these things. I want a committee that's open-minded. All right? And again, I want robust discussions. And I pledge to you that I will follow these if I am appointed to the board. Any questions you have?
Questions from the board?
Same question, I guess, what experience, what do you think Carver needs now? What, so what kind of experience are you looking for in a town administrator that would?
Obviously, the credentials. But I want one that's firm and fair. I've seen too many problems in this town hall between departments. And we need, we need a administrator that will be firm and fair, not play favorites to any departments, go through the department heads, and follow your wishes.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. So I wanted to know what sort of vision you have for the town administrator's interactions with the employees, the departments?
Well, as I mentioned, I, I want to see them go through the department heads. I think it's critical to have that. I'm not sure I understand the rest of the question.
That's, that's a good answer. I, whatever, whatever your answer is, it's fine.
Right. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Carter? Did you say that you think the next town administrator should have a background in, in cranberry harvesting?
No.
Oh, I thought you said that's.
No, no, no. He should be experienced.
What, same question asked before. What do you, what do you think your top three goals, the town administrator should, you know, hit the ground running on?
He's got to hit the ground with the, with the department heads. Then he's got to hit the ground with this committee. And then he's got to hit the ground, letting people know that he makes decisions are not necessarily what's in his mind, but what's in the best interest of all departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman?
If you could pick one thing that you bring to the screening committee, what would that be?
Experience.
Thank you.
All right. And I, as I've asked everyone else, you have no conflicts that would keep you from an aggressive meeting schedule for this committee?
No. No.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in this evening. Uh, next, Roger Shores Jr.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Roger Shores Jr. I grew up here in Carver, although in 1985, I left town on a 30, 35-year journey across the world. I worked for two major manufacturing corporations, both headquartered in Chicago, Illinois. And without going through my, my extensive career history, my latest role was with Berkshire Hathaway, where I served as CEO of Marmen Energy Services, a $3.5 billion manufacturing and finance conglomerate, where I held responsibility for more than 50 businesses and more than 10,000 employees on every continent in the, in the world. I retired in 2019 and eventually made my way back home about a year and a half ago. I currently own land in North Carver, where I have two acres of cranberry bogs and, excuse me, started a sawmill. I believe with my extensive management experience and also my commitment to serve this town that I, that I grew up in, I believe that I'd be an asset to, an asset to the selection committee. With that said, anticipating all of your questions, I have no experience in town government. I don't fully understand the role of the town administrator. And I'm not sure on a local level, I'm qualified. But what I do think I can bring to the table is obviously a, a strong history in managing people, identifying good people, and I think the things that I'm proudest of are not only, are not my own accomplishments, but the ones that I left behind. Every nonprofit organization I've been involved with in the city of Chicago is, is booming. The companies that I left are doing well, and it's all because of making good selection and being identified good people. Thank you for your, you have any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Ryan? What experience do you have hiring people, screening in the past? For the companies you worked at, you probably were involved with interviewing and, and hiring?
Yeah, extensively. I mean, I, I can't even count the number of people I've, I've hired. I can tell you it's a lot more than I've fired, which I'm, I'm happy about. But been involved in everything through selection screening committees like this to, to look for CEOs of nonprofits in Chicago, to, to our own companies. And, and obviously interviewing was a part of my, my everyday experience. And in Chicago, one of my mantras was I would regularly interview young people just in an effort to, to identify who they were, where they were going, and, and offer them not a, most of the opportunities I found for them weren't even with my company. But it's just something I continuously believed in.
And just to finish, the experience, what experience do you think we need to look for, for the town as far as hiring somebody? We've, we've touched upon it generally.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't really seen anybody get worse. A really good idea of, of what you need, and it comes down to probably logic and, and common sense. The experience is, is going to have to be given in a, an administrative role like this. But the, it's the, it's that common sense piece and that honesty and trust in somebody who's going to lead with, by commanding respect, I think, and giving respect. But again, that's, that's a pretty high-level view, you know?
Say, and, and how do you judge the common sense in your, in the process?
It's not easy. I'd love to tell you there's trick questions and things, but I, I do, I tend to, I tend, my interview questions tend to dive more into personal experiences than, than their actual business experience.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jones?
So, given your kind of experience, what, what sort of interactions, relationships would you want to see from, between the town administrator and his or her employees?
Certainly a level of, I mean, I'm a big fan of having metrics and, and being data-driven, but, but again, just, just truly being respectful to the employees and not, not just showing, but I guess we all know what respect is. We know what it feels like when you come in and, and talk to somebody and you have a real honest discussion with them about facts, not about fiction or, or playing favorites, but somebody that just really interacts and, and makes people want to be better.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Shaw, I'm getting everybody mixed up here. Before you take off, just, I want to make sure you have no conflicts, as I've asked the previous applicant, you're available?
Yes, sir, I, I have my own business, so, and I would do whatever's needed.
Okay, and just so, so we're clear, are you applying for the at-large representative or the representative from the business community?
I'll take either.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ward?
Good evening, I'm Steve Ward, 46 Mile Standish Drive. I have been a resident for nearly 60 years. I'm part of the cranberry community. My dad bought a cranberry bog when I was 13 years old. He bought it for the exercise, not for the money. We now have in the area of 90 acres of cranberry bog. I am the past president of the Cape Cod Cranberry Growth Association. I now serve as second vice president. I am the chairman of the Government Affairs Committee. I'm on the State Farm Bureau Board. I'm on the State Pesticide Bureau Board. You name it, I've served on the Farming Community Committee. I worked for the United States Department of Agriculture. I used to take care of all the disaster programs there. Once again, working with the farming community. And although I am a farmer, the most important thing to me is my long-term residency in, in Carver. It's the most important thing to me. I am looking for an administrator, because the town needs to grow. And we need to grow that town in a way that keeps our kids here. We need a place for them to live. So that, I think, is the most important part of growing the town. The thing that I think I will bring to, to the committee is, and as Mr. Shores Jr. said, respect. Respect is the most important thing in my vocabulary. In this committee, I'm going to conduct myself in a respectful way. I want to encourage respect with every member of this committee so that we listen and we hear about and from every possible position that, that has an interest in this, this administrator. I want this administrator to be a hands-on person. When there is a problem, I feel that it's the utmost importance to go to that problem as quickly as possible, do the research, talk to the people involved, and come up with solutions as quickly as possible. I don't like the idea of letting things sit and fester. And so I, I really, this, this is, and thank you. Thank you for allowing me to, to possibly serve in this committee. This is as important as it gets.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Ryan?
Same question, I guess, the past experience interviewing and hiring people?
Yeah, well, in my position at USDA, I, I did a lot of hiring, dozens of people. Also, I was involved in the hiring process at UMass, UMass Experiment Station, for quite a few scientists. We even had scientists applying from South Africa. So we, so I've done quite a bit.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. And, and what sort of interactions are you looking for between a town administrator and the employees?
Like I said before, it's, it's so important to have a hands-on approach. The more respect you give your employees, the better off the town's going to be.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
If you could pick one thing, what, what would that be that you can bring to the screening committee?
I'm going to go right back to it, respect. And that's, I'm just going to encourage every, everyone to be respectful and hear everybody out. I don't want to see a shouting match in this, this committee. I want to hit, see it all, see everyone hurt.
Thank you. And Mr. Ward, as I've asked the other applicants, you have no conflicts that would keep you from attending an aggressive meeting schedule with this committee?
I'm sure there will be conflicts, but we'll work it out. And as long as you have Zoom, I, I, if there's Zoom participation, then, then I will have no problem at all.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Kevin Tracy, was it also an applicant? I'm sorry, Mr. Ward, are, are you applying for the at-large position or the business community position, or both?
I'll, I'll take either one, but I believe I'm penciled in for at-large.
Okay, all right, thank you. So Kevin Tracy, I believe, reached out earlier and mentioned he was delayed. So we'll see if he has an opportunity to come in or not. Mary Ross also applied. She was unable to attend this evening, but she did send a statement to the board. So I'll read that statement for the, for the record. You should all have a copy of the email. So this is from Mary Ross. "Good morning. I have submitted my name to be a member of the Town Administrator Screening Committee because I feel that the consistency of the committee's membership could be an asset in assisting to provide the, a recommendation to the select board. I have been a member of the committee during the previous two rounds of the town administrator selection process and feel that I have a sense of what the town and its employees might look to for a potential candidate for that most important position." might look to for a potential candidate for that most important position. In my role as chairman of the Recreation Committee, I work closely with our town administrators creating a new safe and handicap accessible playground, and now transforming the South Carver COA tennis courts into a new pickleball court space. As an educator in Carver for 30 years and a resident of 47 years, the town's future is important to me." Sincerely, Mary Ross." So that was her statement. And I wanted to read that into the record. Okay. So let's see. So we have two folks that applied for the business community position, and it looks like we have a couple more now. Kevin Tracy, as I mentioned, is not here, so Mr. Borden. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. At Wood and Tenille Main Street, been a resident now for a little over 50 years. Currently serve on the Board of Health, finishing up my 23rd year. Been a business owner on my own for be 35 years in March. Recently relocated to North Main Street in Carver here back in April, so now I'm a business owner in town. Interested in serving on this committee. I would look for an administrator that like everybody else, pretty much just hands-on. I hope they would be such that they wouldn't sit in the corner office there, they'd get up and down the hallways and meet with the department heads and see what's going on. Somebody with a good financial background. We need that to keep the town growing. The ability to work with the finance department and the FinCom. That's pretty much it, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Ryan?
So, thank you. So, Mr. Borden, what sort of interactions or relationship between the town administrator and the employees would you like to see?
Well, as I said, I'd like to see somebody that doesn't camp out in the corner office. I'd like to see them downstairs in the offices with the department heads with an idea of what's going on. It'd be nice if they had an understanding of what the different departments do. I think that would be helpful, but they certainly need to be holding about and dealing with the department heads.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure. Ms. Carter?
Borden, what do you, if you were talking to the town administrator, what do you think are probably the top three challenges or goals that he should try to address once they start in this role?
Now, once they start, it's important that the administrator can deal well with the select board. It's important that they deal well with the finances and the different departments in town.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Ms. Hoffman?
If you could just pick one thing, what would that be that you could bring to the screening committee?
I guess my continuous service to the town, I think, is somewhat important. I've been involved pretty much since I moved in in '72. I feel like I'm a fairly level-headed guy. Again, with others have said, I think we need to have no political things, no political things going on whatsoever. The committee needs to work together as one to come up with a solid candidate to present to you.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Borden, as I've asked the other applicants, you have nothing going on that you think would keep you away from an aggressive meeting schedule?
Only the third Tuesday night of the month, and the Board of Health meets at 5:00. Other than that, I'm available.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. So that's all our applicants. Mr. Tracy has not made it, but you all have his application in your packet. So we've done this a few times now, and we, so the way we've chosen the screening committees in the past for the at-large members, what we've done is we've gone around and each select board member has ranked their choices, 3, 2, 1. Three being your highest recommendation and one being your third recommendation. And the folks that ended up with the three highest scores were our selections for the Town Administrator at-Large Screening Committee. I think for the business community, we can probably just go through the members and everyone recommend one. And if we don't have someone with a majority vote, then we'll drop the low person and do it again until we do have someone with a majority vote. Any issues with that? Would the board like a five-minute recess to sort of review what they've heard? Or do you think you're ready to discuss it now?
I just wanted to ask you again for the record. So our top choice gets a 3?
Yeah. Top choice gets a 3.
Thank you.
So what's the?
So process, how does this work? Are we writing it down and then?
No, no. We're going to announce it, and Ms. Weston is going to tally it. So in other words, if it was Mark Townsend, John Carter, and Dan Ryan, and John Carter was your favorite, John would get the 3? And so on. So would the board like a five-minute recess to think about?
Makes sense. Sure.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back and take a vote. All right, everybody, we are back in session. Would the board like to have a brief discussion period before we announce our choices, or would you like to just vote? It's the pleasure of the board. Everyone, everyone ready to vote?
Sure. I think so.
Mr. Ryan, would you like to start us off?
So you'd like the 3, 2, 1? Yes. Okay. I went with Steve Ward for 3, Roger Shores Jr. for 2, and Ellen Blanchard for 1.
Okay.
I had Steve Ward for 3, Roger Shores Jr. for 2, and Gail D.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I can't.
I had Steve Ward for 3, Roger Shores Jr. for 2, and Gail Di Tomaso for 1.
Okay. Ms. Yhuns?
I have Roger Shores Jr. for 3, Steve Ward for 2, and Roger Senior for 1.
All right. Mr. Hoffman?
I have Gail Di Tomaso for 3, Roger Shores Jr. for 2, and Steve Ward for 1.
All right. And I had Ellen Blanchard for 3, Mary Ross for 2, and Steve Ward for 1.
So.
I have the calculator.
It's all you. Let's all stare at it like.
Yep. Take it down. No rush.
Steve Ward has 10.
All right.
Roger Shores Jr. has 9. Gail Di Tomaso has 4. Ellen Blanchard has 4. Mary Ross has 2.
Oh, right, so.
And Roger Shores Senior has 1.
All right. So we have a tie. If I'm correct, we have a tie between Ellen Blanchard and Gail Di Tomaso?
Yes.
So why don't we simply go around the room and pick one or the other? And I'll be glad to start and pick Ellen Blanchard.
Same, Ellen Blanchard.
Mr. Carter?
Gail Di Tomaso.
I'd go with Gail as well.
And I'll pick Ms. Blanchard.
All right. So I believe that was 3 to 2 for Ms. Blanchard. So the 3, 3 at-large members, if I'm correct, are Steve Ward, Roger Shores Jr., and Ellen Blanchard. Does that match with what you have, Ms. Weston?
Yes.
All right.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
First, I want to thank everybody for applying. That's, to step forward is a big thing. And the reason I went with the people, I don't know whether to discuss it, but I'm trying to get more people involved. Ellen, nothing against you, you've been involved in the town, and you do great on the committee as well, but I'm just trying to get more people involved, so I was glad that we did see some new faces, even though old-time, long-term residents. But I just want to throw it out to the public that it's things like this we need people to apply. I talked to a few of the members in general discussion, just it was good to see so many people apply for this. I know in the past we didn't have a lot to choose from. Here, these are tough decisions, so hopefully we can keep this up. As we said before, we remain, there's boards and committees openings all the time, so I hope people get involved. But I want to thank everybody for applying.
Sure. I think I'm, it's a good idea. Would anyone else like to?
Same here. Thank you to everybody for applying.
Yep.
Yes, thank you all. Much appreciated.
And I would also thank you, and I guess a little background into my choices. I thought, you know, in the past, we've done this, we had three of these committees, and each time, each time we've had the same chairman, but he was unable to serve this time. And I thought that it was important that we have experience on those committees since Mr. Walsh wasn't able to chair it, which is why I chose Ellen Blanchard and Mary Ross as my top two choices. They were on all the previous committees, and I thought those committees did a good job. And my third choice, Mr. Ward, I just, you know, I could have gone with either one of Mr. Shores, Mr. Shaw's Jr. I just thought it was important that we had a member of the farming community on the And I think, like I said, I think any one of those three would have been a good job. I think Mr. Ward has such a varied background that he brings a lot to the committee. So again, I thank you all for applying, and the town really needs your help with this. So, thank you. All right, so moving on to the members of the business community. So we had a couple of people that applied for that. Art Borden, who's here, Kevin Tracy, and I think Steve Ward and Roger Shores Jr. also indicated an interest in that position, but they've all already been elected as at-large members. So it really is just Arthur Borden or Kevin Tracy. And again, why don't we just go around and choose one? I'll start off and say Art Borden. And Ms. Yhuns, would you like to start?
I would like to vote for Mr. Borden as well.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
Art Borden as well.
Folks?
Art Borden.
Oh, sorry.
Art Borden.
All right. Well, Mr. Borden, seeing as you're unanimous, go, congratulations. Thank you. So Art Borden will be our business representative. So just to review, our Town Administrator Screening Committee is now chosen in full. The school committee representative is Stephanie Clowerty. The finance committee representative is Patrick Mahar. The planning board representative is John Gasky. Our public safety representatives are Chief Jewfley and Chief Weston. Our 3 at-large members are, let's see, Steve Ward, Roger Shores Jr., and Ellen Blanchard. And our business community representative is Art Borden. So thank you all for volunteering, and we're going to have a, it's going to be an aggressive meeting schedule, I think, so thank you all.
Mr. Chair?
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I just remind everybody to please get sworn in at the town clerk's office? They're open till 7:00.
They open till 7:00, but I think we need to formally notify them by letter first so the town clerk knows.
That's right.
That they've been appointed.
Yeah, so next Tuesday, they're open.
So you will get a letter in the mail, and then you can come down and see the town clerk and get sworn in, okay? All right, great. So next on our agenda is a discussion or vote on the charge for the committee, guidelines, timeline, and the possible use of a consultant. So you all got a copy of the last Town Administrator Screening Committee charge we used as a guide, and I went through and took the last couple of Town Administrator Screening Committees' charges that we used and sort of made myself a little cheat sheet that I'd like to recommend to the board. So let me, if I could just read that off to you folks, and then we can discuss it. And first of all, when I was looking at this, I think we need to be aggressive in our time for the committee, because I think personally, my goal would be to try to get through this without the need for an interim town administrator, just to go right to a permanent town administrator. Mr. Fennessey has indicated a willingness to work with us. If we need to extend his time a little bit, so I think that would be, that was my goal in putting together this timeline. So when I did this, my timeline was the Town Administrator Screening Committee must meet and choose a chair by January 12, 2024. And I really wanted to make that a little sooner, but the holidays are in the middle there, and again, they could meet sooner if they chose. The Town Administrator Screening Committee must use a recruit consultant and spend no more than $20,000 for the consultant. The advertisement for Town Administrator must be placed by January 19, 2024. At that point, they would, based on their own schedule, they would review and receive resumes from the recruiting consultant, conduct interviews of selected candidates utilizing established questions from the recruit consultant. The recruit consultant will do the reference and background checks. The Town Administrator Screening Committee must comply with the Town Administrator Bylaw, Chapter 3. And finally, the Town Administrator Screening Committee must present at least four unranked finalists to the select board by March 12, 2024. And finally, this wasn't in the previous charges, but I think it's important, and I think Mr. Ward mentioned this earlier, I think we should authorize the Town Administrator Screening Committee to read remotely right away. That way, if they have trouble getting together to organize especially, they can do that remotely. They won't have to meet and then authorize themselves to do that. So that was my thought. I know that time is aggressive, but I thought it was better to set an aggressive timeline for the board, and if they need more time, they could come back to the board and ask for a bit of an extension. But if we give them more time and they don't need it, then that doesn't work. So I thought it was better to be aggressive there. And with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
So two quick questions. So the Town Administrator Committee must use a recruit consultant. I think the last time we said May.
I think we did say May. I think I talked to a lot of people out there, and they all felt that that was really valuable, which is why I said I think they should. I also talked to some people in other towns that have gone through similar processes, and they all seemed to find that the recruiting consultant was valuable. So I just thought, I thought by putting it that way, it removed one thing from, that they would have to meet and discuss.
And Mr. Townsend, who is going to give them a list of these consultants? Would that be Ms. Weston? Okay.
I just remember last time that we didn't want it to seem as though we were telling the committee what to do.
That's true.
That's why I thought the May, I didn't know if we wanted to keep, which way we wanted to word that. I'm sure they'll decide to do it, because it's, like you said, is the best thing, but I remember.
More efficient.
Yeah. Yeah, but I just, again, I didn't.
Again, that's something we can certainly discuss, and I understand your, in fact, originally I had May and I crossed it out. And certainly, I understand your argument. I just thought that while we're on a short time schedule here, that it might be better if we gave them that guidance where it seemed to be valuable.
I mean, I think they'll choose it anyways, but again, I just, I know before, we don't want to have the optics that we're telling them what to do. It's, this is a committee that's separate, you know, that's.
Yeah, yeah. No, I wouldn't disagree, and I certainly understand the argument.
And my other question was, they must present four unranked finalists. What if they don't have four? I know the last time we said may present up to.
Up to four?
I would like to see a number of unranked finalists. I, just personally, if they thought they only had two, maybe they need to come back to the board and say they need a little more time.
Okay.
But I.
I'm just saying, instead of coming back, because I know we're going to be in a short timeline, if we just say up to four, we run out of time another week. If they all, hopefully, they're going to have more than four, you know, but.
But up to means they could have just two.
Yeah, so what if they don't? That's what I'm saying, if they don't have four.
Do we wait, yeah, till they get four?
And again, they could come back to us and say, we reviewed the applicants, and we don't see four here, but I just, I agree with Ms. Yhuns. If we say up to, they could send two, and I just think we need more than that to choose from.
They could send one.
That's true. And I don't know how everybody else feels.
I would say, yeah, we should have a requirement for finalists, not up to, with the concern that we only get one or two people. I was on a screening committee many moons ago, and I think that we use the call-in center, which I guess that was a cost savings, but I think that for this position, we should be spending some money on some consultants to really, you know, find the best candidates. My only question would be, where would the money be coming from? My only question would be, where would the money be coming from?
So, Ms. Weston, do you have a... Do we have the money in the select board account, correct?
Yeah, we do have funding in our budget for that, in the select board budget.
And the Collins Center is one of the consultants. I think this is listed for.
I would recommend we stay away from the Collins Center, but that's my personal...
I would recommend the opposite. But it's up to the screening committee.
Yep.
Yeah, it is up to the screening committee. And I think, you know, we do have folks on the screening committee this time that were also on the screening committee last time, and I'm sure they'll have input into those decisions. Does everyone feel comfortable with most of these guidelines?
I do. I had a question on it. Do we also get a recommenda... Well, not so much a recommendation, they're unranked. But do we get any kind of a write-up on why they were selected as the top four? Will that be provided, you know, or do we want to know?
They give us four finalists.
Okay, and that's it?
We interview them, and we discuss it, and we choose someone. But no, this...
Okay.
But if, supposing they choose to write up something?
I guess they could, but, you know, I mean, again, these are unranked, so...
I was looking for more like, you know, strong financials, strong, you know, working with, you know, because they're gonna do all the legwork of identifying and interviewing and asking questions. So it might be good to know the characteristics of why they ended up in the top list. Are they, you know, do they work well with people? Or they have a very strong background? Do they, you know, work well with department heads and things like that? It might be, just a summary would help us in knowing why they were selected to be in the list.
It might be. Again, we do get resumes and background information on the candidates, so...
Do we interview the candidates, too?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
But this is not preventing them from writing something up if they wanted to. As long as they weren't ranked.
That's right, I agree. Okay. So I guess the question here is, as far as the consultant, do we want to say that Town Administrator Screening Committee may use a consultant? Or do we want to say they must use a consultant? I guess that's a question we need to decide.
I think the must is important.
I'm gonna say, I would, yeah, I would agree.
Because if you have somebody...
I'm not sure.
The must, we said the must. Because if you have, if they have the experience, you know, if it's a consultant and they have experience filling these kinds of positions, then they're gonna offer some value to us in making sure we get the right person.
And time-saving.
And that was my main thing with it, saving the time, yeah. Okay. Any other thoughts on this? Mr. Hoffman, anything?
No, that was it.
Nope.
Question's out.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the suggestions for the charge.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes for November 21, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. And we have the minutes of December 11, 2023. And I believe Ms. Huens had a correction to some of the minutes. Did all of you get a chance to see that correction?
Sorry, I didn't.
I didn't see the correction.
Okay. Ms. Huens, would you like to read that correction for the board?
I do not have it in front of me.
Okay. Why don't we put those minutes off to the next minute? Would that board okay with that?
Yep.
I hate to put minutes off, but it was a lengthy correction, I think. So in this case, we'll put those off.
Thank you.
To, my pleasure. Let's see, approval of licenses, there were none. Topics not reasonably anticipated outside the chair, 48 hours in advance, there were none. Select board announcements. Mr. Ryan?
I'd like to say thank you to all the town personnel that were involved in the cleanup from the storm and all those that helped residents that had damage. I understand we had a few residents with some significant damage. So I'd like to, we appreciate everything that was done for the town.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I hope that everyone has full power back tonight after getting through the storm. I also wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. Ms. Huens?
Oh, yes, I agree. The town departments were wonderful, operations and maintenance, DPW did a terrific job. And I want people to remember Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry this time of year. And I hope everyone has happy holidays.
All right. Mr. Hoffman?
I'd like to echo everyone else's sentiments. I thought the town did a great job in that, that storm that came in. And some people are still up without power, but hopefully by tonight, they'll be back on. But it was just amazing how quick they did get to everything. So, once again, great job with everybody. And I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right, thank you. And for myself, if you happen to be watching this live, the Carver Middle High School Chorus and Band is having their holiday concert tonight. It's at 7:00 at the high school auditorium. So if you're in the mood for some holiday entertainment, head over to the high school. And I want to echo everybody else's comments about our town departments. We always see what the quality of our people when we have these kind of things. And just a special shout-out to Tom Walsh, who I know is our EMS, ERC director, who was, I know was down there all day yesterday and worked very hard, so, and he always does. So a special shout-out to Tom Walsh. And Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Our next meeting is January 2, 2024. Doesn't seem like we should be saying 2024, does it? All right, is there a motion?
Be the same time, to 5:00?
Is it? 5:00.
5:00.
Motion adjourned.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?